Like to call a special meeting of March eighteenth, twenty twenty four, the Planning Commission. If everybody would stand for the pleasure lesions and over hard.
My allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rock Hall.
Commissioner De Fazio.
Presence.
Commissioner Sarkia.
Here.
Vice Chair Reese.
Here.
Chair Mercado.
Here. Go to our first business item, which is the public workshop regarding urban growth boundary update, and that'll be presented by City Manager Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I'm going to apologize in advance. It's going to be a little bit of a lengthy presentation. If any of you watched the city council discussion of this or the green team discussion of this, it's going to seem very, very familiar, but I do need to go through this for the benefit of anyone here who hasn't been through that yet. So we'll do that as quickly as possible. The object of tonight's meeting is to accept public input as well as Planning Commission input on what is still a very early stage of the process in this urban growth boundary update. So let me get started really quickly. The slideshow on here. Let's see where it is. Let's see if I can get Zoom to work for me here. We go. Is that is that playing properly? Okay, great. All right. Okay. So before we get too far into this, let me just give a define a couple of terms here, which some may be vaguely familiar with, others may not be familiar with at all, but there's an important distinction to be made between these three items. They are the city limits, the sphere of influence line, and the urban growth boundary. So here you see the map of the city of Beulton city limits. The city limits delineate the incorporated boundaries of the city. Incorporation of a city is authorized or granted by the county's local agency formation commission, the LAFCO is what we refer to that as. LAFCO is actually a state agency, but there's one in each county, and it's made up of various representatives from the county's local government, special districts, cities, and the county. The initial incorporation of city limits is done by LAFCO, and then any amendments to those city limits, whether it be growing the area of the city, which we refer to as annexation, or shrinking the area of the city, which we would refer to as detachment. All of those actions are handled by LAFCO. And it's under their authority. It doesn't really have anything to do with what the city wants frequently. While they will take that into consideration, it is it is that body's decision ultimately what happens. The sphere of influence is a little bit different. You'll notice the map, which is here, which shows the city's current sphere of influence line. And Beulton is unusual in the fact that its sphere of influence at this time is contiguous or coterminous with its city limit line. So the city limit line and the sphere of influence line are correct are the same. The sphere of influence refers to an area that the city could reasonably be assumed to provide municipal services for in the future. So it doesn't necessarily mean that the area will be annexed at some point into the city, but it means that LAFCO, in its wisdom and judgment, has determined that they feel at some point in the future, it would be reasonable for that area to be served with municipal services by the city. And for the purposes of this discussion, when we talk about municipal services, we're primarily referring to water and sewer service. Although, when when we talk about an annexation, if an area is annexed into the city, we also talk about all the other services that are that are provided by the city to include its police powers for planning and building and safety and those sorts of things. The sphere of influence is established also by LAFCO. The city does not have a vote in that, while that LAFCO will consult with the city as to what its thoughts and plans are for the future. Ultimately, the LAFCO board will make a determination as to where these boundaries lie, and they will do as they see fit. The sphere of influence can be and frequently is amended by LAFCO on a periodic basis, and that's done after a periodic analysis of services, what they refer to as an MSR or Municipal Service Review. Our new LAFCO director, relatively new, he's been here in four or five years now, has taken a different approach to this rather than doing a full municipal service review every five years or so. He's broken it up, and each agency will do a portion of their municipal service review every year. So over the course of five years or so, they will have completed that. And then they'll be ready to look at sphere of influence amendments. So they're almost through that process right now. The important thing to recognize here is the Citizens Initiative that that created the urban growth boundary, while it mentions the sphere of influence in it, does not affect the sphere of influence. So and there's a lot of misconceptions about that in the public, and it actually with myself even until the LAFCO director set me straight about a month ago. So. Um, lastly, this is the urban growth boundary, and you'll note that the boundaries that are shown on the map are exactly the same as the sphere of influence and the city limit line. The urban growth boundary is a it's a legal document. It's a legal tool that was established by Citizen Initiative back in two thousand and eight. As such, it can only be amended by the voters, except that there is a sunset date on that. This urban growth boundary is set to expire on December thirty first of two thousand and twenty five. So if no action is taken to update this urban growth boundary, then the urban growth boundary will simply cease to exist as of that date. It is currently coterminous with the city limits, as I've mentioned, and that brings us to the point of the discussion we're in this evening. It has been my goal, and when I say my, I don't mean the city's goal, it has been my goal as a city manager to bring forward to the city council, to the planning commission, to the public, a proposal for a an update or an extension to the urban growth boundary. The urban growth boundary was very contentious when it was first adopted in two thousand and eight. There were actually two competing initiatives on the ballot. There was the city council proposed initiative, and there was the citizen initiative, citizen sponsored initiative, and the citizen sponsored initiative is actually the one that was adopted. So. At this point, what I'm hoping to do through this process is start a discussion that will lead to a plan that the city council can put on the ballot that will have broad community support, so that we don't have the same sort of community contention that was experienced back here in two thousand and eight. As I, as I have heard, because this was long before I was here, this was very contentious and and rather divisive amongst different segments of the community here. So my goal is to avoid all of that, have one document or one initiative that will put forward so that everybody can get behind it. Okay. So and I apologize. I have I have weird animations that didn't get pulled out of this this version here. When we talked about sphere of influence, as I I mentioned, LAFCO has the the only say in where those draw or where those lines are drawn. However, the city can have some input into that. And it can have the most input when it consults with the county through county planning department. And we are currently planning to do that. The Planning Director and I met with the LAFCO Director, oh, what, two weeks ago, three weeks ago? And discuss discuss the possibility of meeting with the county early on to try and work some of these things out, because generally speaking, if the county Planning Department and the city get together and can come to some sort of an agreement, then LAFCO tends to take that into consideration much more strongly. So what we what I am looking at right now as an initial point of discussion for this sphere of influence is shown here on the map. You see that there are areas to the west, to the east of the center of town, and then to the north, the far north end. So it will be easier to kind of go back and talk about the sphere of influence concept at the end, after I move through this, because I think it gets a little confusing otherwise. So let me move past this for the moment, and we'll come back to it here in a few minutes. This is my initial concept for the urban growth boundary, and you'll see there's again, there's areas to the west, although it's a much smaller area to the west we're looking at for the urban growth boundary extension. Areas to the east, again, much smaller than the than what was shown on the sphere of influence map. And then to the north, and that would be the same area at this point as what was what was placed on the sphere of influence concept. What you will notice is an area to the south that's in blue. And this was a discussion that started several years ago, maybe four years ago. We had a landowner, actually several landowners of property on both sides of the one oh one freeway, south of the city limits there, had approached the city with a a concept of annexing into the city for the purpose of developing a number of uses, one of which was a hotel. There was a gas station truck stop sort of proposal. There was a an RV resort à la flying flags, and then there was a a large area that's owned by Granite Construction that's used for aggregate mining that would be converted to sports fields. It was their concept. So we got into that discussion fairly early on, and we started to hear some pushback from the public, and so we the council advised me, we need to step back from this and have them go out and do their public outreach. Rather than going out and doing some public outreach and education and trying to let people know what was going on, they decided, I guess, to go to the county, and so they've been having discussions with the county planning department about what can be done in the area. So. From my perspective as the city manager, I don't believe that we need area to the south of the river. That's not it's not necessary for for the the future benefit of the city unless there are urban uses which are approved down there by the county. So if they this landowner group has gone to the county and they are successful in getting the county to approve some urban uses down there, then what has been discussed here and what I'm putting forward is a concept wherein the urban growth boundary is not changed to the south unless those uses are approved. If those uses are approved by the county, then the urban growth boundary would automatically and immediately extend to encompass those areas. And the reason for this is because urban development of that sort is is very impactful on local infrastructure, roadways, water, sewer, that sort of thing. And even if it even if those uses were initially not tied to water and sewer, eventually there would be some impact on the city's ability to provide water and sewer services based on what's happening there. Therefore, in the event that those types of uses would be approved by the county, by extending that urban growth boundary, immediately the city would be then poised to annex those urban uses there, thereby taking in the revenues that they might be generating so that they we can help pay for our infrastructure costs. Otherwise, there's no no real benefit to taking that.
Quick questions.
Yes, sir.
Part of because I was there on council at the time we were doing.
Absolutely.
So have those talks progressed to a point where anything is in hindsight, looking forward? I mean, are we just?
I I don't know. That's the problem is is I've not been able to find anything out from the county. I did speak to the county supervisor about it, and and she informed me that they had been having discussions and that her hope was that they would come in with a development that met the zoning requirements for the area out there. I I don't know what stage that might be in. But my my point with this is by placing this this provision within the the initiative that would be brought forward, it provides a disincentive for the county to approve something in that area that they wouldn't normally want to approve. An agency that's kind of strapped for cash might think, oh, it's a good idea. Let's just approve a hotel right outside the city limit line. Well, if they know that if they approve it, but the city's got to turn around and annex it, they're not going to get the T O T for it. There's no incentive for them to approve it. So this this kind of belt and suspenders approach is lends itself toward preventing that sort of action from taking place, or at least minimizing it. Okay. I'm going to go through each one of these, the north or the, excuse me, yeah, the north, west, and east in turn, and I'll try and make this relatively quick. Ignore the land use concept. I go back and talk about it later if you like. It basically attempts to reflect on our city's general plan map, what the county zoning is, and it would stay that way until such time as properties were determined to be annexable. Okay, we'll start with the property to the west. This area extends on either side of Highway two forty six to the west of the city limits, approximately one half a mile. And the proposal here is to extend the urban growth boundary this direction for a half a mile with a very unusual provision. Typically, if you look at extending an urban growth boundary, it would remove the requirement for a voter approval of a particular project. However, what I'm suggesting here is that we extend the urban growth boundary out that far, but retain the requirement for voter approval on projects unless a project is required to meet a state housing mandate. And everyone looks at me when I tell them this and say, well, what's the difference? If you have to go to a vote anyway, and housing mandate would be not subject to that, what's what's the difference? HCD tends to look at things a little strangely, and that they're looking for. They're kind of hypersensitive to anything that could be considered an obstacle to housing development. So when we have to go back to the state with our housing element update in two thousand and thirty one, okay, we have to provide for them a list of properties which are conceivably available for development with housing. If I send or if Andrea, pardon me, because it's her job, and she sends them a list of properties, and some of those properties are outside the urban growth boundary, the county is very likely to say, we're not going to accept that, because even though there might be this provision to that that would exempt housing projects. There's still it's still outside of the city's ability to formally annex directly. By moving the urban growth boundary out and encompassing it and requiring the voter voter initiative process be used for any project other than a state mandate, what it tells the state is we are actively encouraging the house, the development of housing in that area if it's needed. And I I know I'm going to get comments eventually. I haven't yet, but maybe tonight, maybe at some other point from some of the property owners to the west here who may not be interested in this, and this in no way requires property to be annexed. It in no way requires housing to be developed out there. What it allows the city to do is to say to the state, if we have to meet our housing mandate, here is an area where it could happen, because at this point at least, we're not required to to build housing. We are required to plan for housing. So that this I like to refer to it as a relief valve, pressure relief valve to the west, kind of in a in a long term fashion, because we're not expecting a housing element, or we're not expecting new housing mandates to come to the city until two thousand and thirty one, and I am expecting a much larger number than we got this time. So. This would allow us to be able to point to some area and say, this is our area for housing. But anything that comes in there other than meeting a housing mandate, not just development of housing, but it's housing to meet that mandate. Anything other than that would have to there, but have to go back before the voters the same way as it would if it were not within the urban growth boundary. Let me move. Okay, that that explains a little bit of what I've said right here. This is area. There's this tiny little piece of property. It's about two acres in size. It's located immediately behind the Hampton Inn. It has an access point on McMurray Road. You wouldn't know it's there. There's nothing to define it right now. It's just a it's just a parcel back there. We I I'm looking at this as more of a correction to our map. It's probably something given its size that doesn't really, it's nonconforming under the county zoning. It probably should have been included back when the city incorporated, for whatever reason it was not. And so in order to allow for some development of that at some point in the future, it's two acres. It has an established access point already. It seems to make sense to just clean up that line and include it.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
It says five acres minimum.
Right. Okay, this goes back to the 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 land use plan I had put on a previous slide. And it's again, it's the planner in me. I have a tendency to want to, if we do something like this, we should reflect all of these things on our general plan map. And as if it goes on the general plan map, it's inappropriate to say, oh, this is going to be high density residential, or this is going to be commercial. It should reflect what the use is under the county's designation right now. And so what I've done is I've created some new designations here that reflect what the underlying county zoning is requiring. And that, for lack of a better term, I would call it a holding zone. It's something we put it in because at the before the city can annex a piece of property, it needs to the term is pre-zoning that needs to to go through a zone change process, establish a zoning for the property and present that to LAFCO for their considerations. So. LAFCO, as I understand it, is is averse to allowing the annexation of agricultural lands for agricultural purposes. If you want to add it, if the city wants to annex it, it needs to have a a purpose in mind. So that pre-zoning would have to take place before the annexation takes place. Did I answer all?
Yeah.
All right. This one is is a little bit different. This is a forty seven acre piece of property. Most of you probably know roughly where it's at, even if you haven't seen it. You can see it on the map or the aerial photo up here behind you. It's the Circle JB Polo Ranch. You may or may not have been up there. It's a spectacular piece of property. It is currently a polo training facility and ranch. Joel Baker is the owner of it up there. He's owned it for ages. And he has, as he's told me, he has been approached by a hotel developer, actually a couple of different hotel developers with the concept of placing some sort of a resort up at that site. Details are thin right now, but what is apparent is that if something like that were going to happen, it would have to take place within the city limits. The water and sewer requirements for that type of a facility are such that they would not likely get away with a septic system, and they probably couldn't achieve required fire flow volume or pressure without tying into the city system as well. So that would kind of necessitate consideration of annexation if this were going to happen. So they did approach the county with this. It did not. Their concept was not workable under the county zoning, which is at one. In discussions with the county, they they determined there was really no way to make it work there, and they the county directed them to approach the city and discuss it here. This is because it is so, what's I guess the term I'm looking for is nebulous right now. We don't have a project. We just have a concept. And because the the concept for this project is is kind of large, but still really nebulous, the the city needs to take a long, hard look at this before it would make a decision on it. And the only way to really make a determination as to whether or not our infrastructure is capable of handling this, whether or not it meets city goals and and requirements would be to undertake. My preferred tool would be to undertake a specific plan. In other words, adopt a create a specific plan, have it go through our process here. We'll go through the environmental review process. It would go through our infrastructure analysis process and determine where it works and where it doesn't. And if it doesn't work, then it doesn't get approved. And if it does work, then the council can talk about what what the next steps are going to be. But the the potential benefits to the city for a project like this, if it's appropriately done, are huge. And if if it turns out that the that the impacts outweigh the the benefits to it, then the the specific plan is just denied and it goes away. So that's my concept. Again, as we move forward, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on it. This last piece here is to the north. You'll recognize these properties up here are part of what what I would refer to as the King's Ranch, King's River Ranch or the Buell Ranch property. It's owned by the Buell family, and I have been approached by the executor of the Buell family estate trust, whichever it is there. And I have, he has expressed an interest in at some point having the city consider annexing this property, obviously for development purposes. Now, I will tell you that the initial discussion I had with him has indicated to me that these properties are covered by Williamson Act contract, which is Williamson Act is a contract between a private property owner and either a city or a county, the purpose of which is to reduce property tax in exchange for a commitment to leave the property as as open space or agricultural use. Once you've enacted one of these contracts, it's a minimum of ten years before you can get out of it. It renews automatically every year until you opt out, and once you opt out, you have to wait ten years before it's developed. So in concept with this, we would have a ten year waiting period on this before anything could be developed, even if it even if the urban growth boundary were extended. I am going to throw a caveat out here right now in in addressing. I don't know if you saw my letter or my response back to Nancy Emerson today. In response to one of her questions, I did a little further research on another piece of property, which led me back to these properties, and it appears that some of them may not have that contract imposed on them at this point. So I've reached out to the the representative, the property owner. And when he gets back into town, he's going to pull the paperwork on it and verify that for one way or another. But the county records available online do not show that contract on all of these. So. Stay tuned. We're we're not quite sure, you know, how how this would affect anything right now.
And by all, excuse me.
Yes.
By all of those, you're meaning like individual, the individual part.
Correct. Yeah.
And am I correct in saying there are five parcels?
Well, there are five parcels outside the city limits. The the two that are down inside the city limits currently are part of that same ranch property.
Okay.
They're actually, they they contain some of the horse breeding facilities that are there, but they are inside the city limit line already. And so and I believe they are zoned, they are zone manufacturing industrial use. So, okay. All right. Verification pending on the Williamson Act. I will let you know, and I'll post it on the city's engage page as soon as I have an answer to that. Okay, the question I get asked probably more than anything else is, why are we doing this right now? And the the real answer is because it's going to expire, and if we don't do something, it's going to go away in its entirety, and then we lose an important tool. The main purpose of this tool or the main benefit to having a tool like this is that it allows the city to actually provide some guidance and some direction to property owners as to where the city believes development should be moving, the direction it should be moving. Or not at all, if the council and if the the city, the residents determine that there is no benefit to having any growth at all in the city moving forward, then that's that's acceptable also. To my knowledge here, or to my projections that I'm making, I think we're going to have a need for more industrial property. Now, we have some industrial property, as I mentioned, on the property to the north, where we could be able to accommodate that. Some of that we may need a little bit more. I don't know. We may also need some additional residential property here, not only to meet state mandates, but as as we've seen, Avenue of Flags has been sitting for fifty years, waiting for somebody to come and build something on it. And we've got a couple of projects in the works right now. Things are starting to move. But what 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 I have felt since the day I got here was that the reason Avenue of Flags isn't seeing the attention it gets is because we don't have a population in the valley great enough to draw in financing to develop commercial property. There has to be, there's kind of a critical mass has to be there. I think the valley is almost there. We're starting to see that right now, and it's not simply the population, but it's the demographic as well. I think our housing values have gone up to the point where it's getting the attention of financing sources throughout the state. So we're going to start seeing that, but a little bit more development over time helps the city continue to function properly and would would allow that kind of that kind of spurring to take place. The, the second one is to provide that relief out particularly to the west, but also to the north in the event that, uh, development to the west were, um, were ruled out altogether. We received a very small Rena number this year. It was a hundred and sixty-five units. And, um, that was smaller than our previous cycle. We are the only city in the state that I'm aware of that had a smaller, Rena number this cycle than it did the last one. Most cities received much larger some as much as two or three times what the prior cycle was. So we got lucky this time. Somehow I don't think the rest of the county is gonna allow Buellton to get lucky next time around. So, uh, we need to be prepared for that. And unfortunately, if we don't have a, a location to go where we expand out from the city limits, we're likely to be forced to approve projects that go up. And that's fine if the, if the city would rather see development more intense and, and higher slung, uh, than it would moving out a little bit. That's fine. It's a choice to be made. But I wanna give, um, I wanna open the discussions so that people understand what the, um, you know, what the rules of the game are. Let's put it that way.
So.
Yes.
You're talking about instead of being three-story, or that we could go up to five or six stories.
So.
You say up?
When I say up, that's what I'm referring to. And I say that because we have, we have room for some development here in the city. We have our current Rena numbers of a hundred and sixty-five. Uh, we will meet that this year or next year. We will have that amount of development. And that takes up maybe a third of our AHA's sites in the city. Okay. And then over the next five to seven years, you would expect that one or two more of those may come. So what's left by the time the next cycle starts and they give us that new number may not be enough to accommodate that number. Uh, if we don't do that, uh, the state does not care what our zoning regulations are with regard to heights. The state does not care what our regulations are with regard to setbacks. So they will, and they have come to cities and said, you will build, you will allow this development and your, your, uh, height limits or your setbacks will not be an obstacle to this. And so, um, that's why it's, it's kind of important that we make that decision with our eyes open and say, okay, are we gonna, are we gonna look, are we gonna be willing to go up if that's the way they force us to do it? Or do we wanna provide a little room on the outside if it's needed to accommodate this housing?
You mean like if it's, you don't have a housing element in compliance and there's builder's remedy or?
No. Um, uh, if, if we, um, if we are required, let's, uh, what is it? SB, uh, there's SB thirty-five, SB three thirty that deal with streamlining and with, um, uh, SB thirty-five even takes away the ability to hold public hearings. We've seen that with the Polo Village, um, project over here. They are, the state is becoming very, um, oh, I don't know what you wanna call it, aggressive with cities that try to create a zoning ordinance to defend this, the community character that limits the ability to develop housing inside of it. And so, um, they, uh, this is something to be wary of. Like I said, it's, it's, it's a policy call, uh, on the part of, in this case, it'll be the part of the residents, the voters as to which way they wanna go with it. But that's why I'm bringing it up here.
May I ask a follow-up on that? I'm just guessing this is something we want to make sure that the residents understand that there may come a point in time where your desires and wishes and preferences will not matter simply because the city cannot, the state has, has the power to.
We're already there.
Yeah.
In a lot of cases, but I, and you can see the, um, as I understand it, there were over twenty-five hundred uh, bills submitted to the legislature this past cycle and a good chunk of those were housing related. And housing, um, housing requirements and housing mandates on cities are not getting looser. They're, they're getting tighter. So, um, it's, uh, you know, I, I don't, I don't wanna be Chicken Little and scream that the sky is falling, but you only have to look at the trend in the legislature to see which way it's been going. And that, at least to date, we have not seen that trend abate. So, just, you know, my, my, again, the planner in me, I'm looking ahead, trying to figure out, you know, what, what's gonna happen here. And I think, oh, the, the last thing I wanted to hit on goes back to the sphere of influence. Um, with the, the property to the west, I mentioned that the, I, I was suggesting the urban growth boundary be extended out a half mile to the west of the city. Um, it would be my thought to try and work with the county to allow the sphere of influence to be extended out a mile to the west of the city. Another half mile beyond the, the urban growth boundary. And the reason for that is, especially if we can get, um, a, a sphere of influence that is, that, that Lafco endorses based on a memorandum of agreement between the county and the city, it becomes much more likely that the city would be, uh, consulted if the county decides to do anything out there, whether it be adopting ordinance, say, to allow for cannabis growth or, um, uh, you know, uh, change the land use requirements out there in, in, to the west of the city. Uh, what we found, uh, is that because we did not have that seat at the table, the county adopted their cannabis ordinance and by the time the city realized what was going on, it was too late. All of the, all of the, uh, cannabis growth permits had been issued, uh, two years ago they'd been issued. And so any attempt to appeal those, um, you know, fell on deaf ears. The, the board of supervisors had made its decision already. So, that's where we are, are looking to try and, uh, gain some more influence with the county by that sphere of influence. I don't, honestly, I don't ever see annexing anything that far out. And the primary reason for that is because Highway two forty-six at Avenue Flags, one oh one and McMurray Road, are already heavily congested. If you put more traffic out there to come in from that direction, it's only gonna make the situation worse until, or unless we can reach a point where we can get Caltrans to widen that overpass and provide some more, uh, access through there. Even that doesn't fix the problem at McMurray. So, um, that's my, my, uh, kind of my crystal ball right there is the stuff to the west where we're looking at an urban growth boundary is great to point the state to and say, hey, we need this. Um, there's where we can build it if we had to. But honestly, um, if, if I had to use my crystal ball and say, we're, growth in the city should go a particular direction, I would say it would need to go and more appropriately go to the north, um, on the east side of the one oh one. Because if we take it on the north side, it provides a little bit of pressure relief from the congestion on McMurray Road. Uh, the, uh, the interchange there at Rufus T. Buell, formerly Demasa, is too narrow to accommodate a whole lot of traffic there. So an additional, um, access point to the north of the city where you wouldn't have to build a full interchange because it would be on the highway as opposed to the freeway portion of it, uh, could, could go a long way toward alleviating traffic congestion within the city. That's in my mind, the appropriate way for it to go. Let me go back to the beginning and state that what I put before you right now is not a proposal. It is a concept that's being, that I, I wanna use as a starting point for discussion. So this is not a recommendation. This is not a proposal. This is simply a place that everyone can look at and say, okay, if we look at this, where do we think we wanna go from here? Um, I'm taking public comment right now. As I get public comment, I will post it on our city's Buellton Engage page. Um, and we'll, we'll, we'll keep that conversation going for the next couple of months. Um, what we're here to do, oh, steps in the process. You, you've seen this, uh, March, uh, March eighteenth tonight is the Public, uh, Planning Commission Public Input Workshop. We'll have a similar one for the city council on April twenty-fifth with the goal of having the city council make a decision as to what they wanna do with this on the twenty-third of May. And that date's important because in order to meet the county deadline for placing an item on the ballot, um, that's kind of the date to shoot for. We might have one more council meeting where it could happen, but the county deals with their budget during that period. And it gets really cranky if you try to put other things on the agenda. So, um, this is our, our, our timeline. Uh, we will take public input through this entire process and I will, uh, we wanna start that tonight with this workshop. So what I'm envisioning here is, um, and, and I'll leave it to the chair to, to amend this as you see fit. But I, I think that we've got, um, four different areas to look at. And, and I've included the area to the south here, even though it's not officially part of the concept. In my mind, there is some question as to whether or not that, um, approach is the right one. What I would suggest is take each of these seg- sections or sectors in turn. Um, take public comments on it, discuss amongst yourselves, give staff comments. We'll be making notes and we'll go back and review the recordings later to make sure we got them all. And then we'll try and incorporate those into the discussion of the city council meeting so that we're getting a kind of a cumulative approach to the discussion on this. I'm gonna shut up right now and let you, uh, let, let you take this meeting over and, and, and run with it. So, I thank you for your attention and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Scott. Um, I think appropriately, if we have any questions here from commissioners first, before we start, then we'll open up public comment.
Just general questions for now?
Yeah.
Uh, I have a general question about whether this, um, ballot measure would sunset or would be permanent, at least until amended?
It's, I would always recommend a sunset date on it. And I would probably suggest that sunset date somewhere between twelve and sixteen years out. And I would suggest that the date that is selected for it coincide with the year of a general election so that in the event there was a desire to extend or amend that, um, there would be time to do that before that general election as opposed to the situation we're in now where we have to do it this year or, or it will expire before the next opportunity comes up.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think I asked plenty of questions already, but. Anything?
Uh, not right now, no.
Good. Okay.
Sorry. Be difficult. Uh, you mentioned something about, um, annexation. I think when you were talking about the west side.
Yes.
Um, annexation wouldn't typically occur on those agricultural parcels unless there was a plan for how they would be developed. Could you clarify?
Sure. So under the current urban growth boundary requirements, if one of those properties to the west of the city decided they wanted to annex into the city, um, that can be accomplished in, uh, unless it fits into one of the exemptions, it could be accomplished through, uh, another ballot initiative. With the city council would place it on the ballot, the voters would vote. And if it, if it passed, it would then be included within the urban growth boundary and that, uh, could then be annexed. In the case of this, because of my concern with HCD, what I'm suggesting is kind of reversing that, extending the urban growth boundary out to encompass those areas, but still requiring a voter, um, initiative for anything other than meeting a state mandate.
Okay.
Okay. That's good. Um, hopefully you've filled out some speakerships. And if you haven't, um, we'll take it by raise of hands who would like to, and we'll start with the west. If anybody has any comments on our urban growth restriction on the west. Yeah. Well, you can fill it out later, but just state your name and so they can.
Glenn Lakenstein. I live, uh, in the west. Uh, but, um, my only concern about, and thank you, Scott. Uh, I think this is the appropriate thing to be doing and good timing. Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing. Um, my only concern about, uh, and I, I think it does make sense to send a message to Lafco that some, um, growth westward might make sense. Um, my concern is that half a mile is too far. If that were flipped over and you were to go half a mile east, I'm not sure how far it goes, but it looks to me like it's going to encompass more than Sycamore Ranch and more than the Meadowview. It's a large area, um, and more than I think we're going to need in whatever next timeframe we have to, um, uh, accommodate the mandatory housing requirements. And I also think that housing is probably going to be, uh, higher density just because of the cost of it, um, than Sycamore Ranch. So that's a lot of houses. I don't think we need that much area. I think, uh, I don't know how much, but less than that. Maybe that's the sphere of influence, uh, boundary, but not the issue. Thank you.
John Dorwin, one oh four Six Flag Circle, Buellton residence since nineteen eighty-eight. I've heard the question posed, do we want to develop up or do we want to develop out? And it seems to be that going to the west would be going out sprawl. I'm looking at an alternative perception. And that would be instead of asking the question up or out, how about going small? I spent a year living in Japan and for the last thousand years, they've been looking at the housing issue from a distinctively different perspective. And they have been very resource constrained and they've also been seismically challenged. And I think we really need to look at whatever we do in the context of building safe and building small and upgrading our requirements for housing and development to meet the realities of seismic potential in the area we live in. Nobody remembers the eighteen twelve earthquake that destroyed Long Polk and caused the mission to be relocated on the other side of the San Ynez River. Nobody remembers the tsunami at Gabiota that took a ship out the channel and brought it a mile inland. Nobody talks about nineteen twenty-five and why Santa Barbara is so beautiful. Well, it was because the whole downtown was destroyed and Pearl Chase got to make the town over in her dream image. So I think we really need to think about the seismic dimension because we live at the confluence of two alluvial fans. We live on the south bank of the San Ynez River and at the entrance of Zaca Creek. And I think we need to understand what is going to happen around here when we have a seismic event. Now, Long Polk, they didn't have seismometers back there, but the estimate it was a seven point one. It was pretty good shape. Uh, Santa Barbara, the estimate was, it was a six point three, but it, it did a lot of damage. So before you go up, make sure what you build will be safe in a Richter eight event. And I thought about this. I said, why don't we send our planning department to Japan? And send them over there for a couple of months and have them bring back the, uh, Tokyo Metropolitan, uh, building code. So we can adopt that here in Buellton after translation, you know? And, you know, if, you know, give them an expense account, tomatoes, you know, whatever. But let's, let's get the, program to catch up with the reality that we live in a dangerous, uh, situation here on the north bank of the, uh, San Ynez River. I looked at, at some of the
One minute, John.
That's out there.
One more minute.
I looked at some of the legislation that's out there and I came across SB six eighty-four. And that talks about a six hundred square foot minimum parcel size. And I said, hey, that is pretty similar to what I live across the street from. Flying Flags, they have tiny houses over there. What if we did, um, owner-owned mobile home park with either tiny houses or, you know, single wides or five hundred feet, square feet, um, triple wides are twenty-eight, ten square feet, the casita model, almost three thousand square feet. What if we did that and had people own their own lot? And have that financed conventionally? Then we could go small and we could meet whatever Rena numbers the state ever threw at us. So I'd like to see more RV parks, more mobile home parks and owner-owned RV parks or mobile home parks. Just consider the alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments on the west? Anybody else have any comments on the west?
Does anybody take into account? Called water is gonna be impacted. I think it's anti-capacity, just a general question for the state for us. We take into account water like groundwater infiltration, saltwater and all of that?
We do, um, we do. Um, the state does not. The the state tells us you have to do it, but then they say, but you have to accommodate X number of dwelling units every seven years. And so it it is, it is always at the front, at the forefront of our reasoning as to whether or not we can accommodate water. And water is only the front half of it. Uh, once that water gets piped into your house, we have to have the capacity to deal with the wastewater that comes out of that. And so. Our wastewater plant is old, it's in need of of um probably some upgrades and maintenance and we need to make sure that we don't over. Extend our ability to deal with the wastewater also. So it's a balancing act and uh we have to consider all of those things. Yes.
Kathy Breland, sorry. Um, just for visualization, like what is a half mile? Is it Windmill Nursery or is it the Beelton Vat? Like just to give like a visual.
So. If we look at the map here, the halfway point on the uh this right about the halfway point there, that's the end of Brick Barn. And so the nursery is probably right in here someplace. It's just a little beyond the nursery, I think is what you're looking at.
Thank you.
Nancy Dorwin, one oh four six flag. Uh, two comments, water and sewer. Now, if. If we cannot accommodate. The additional housing. Because of water and sewer. What is the um? Enforcement of the housing element mandated by the state then?
That's an excellent question. I wish I had the answer to that. It is, it's not something we've had to deal with yet because we we don't get to unilaterally decide we can't. We can't support or we can't provide service. We have to be able to uh justify that with statistics from our plant. So if we were to run out, I I honestly, I don't know. Um, we've not been there. Uh, I'm sure that there have been some cities that have. That may have been there in the past and we can certainly look into it and see what our what our options would be.
Cause I think this is kind of the the chicken or the egg kind of scenario. You're required to put in so much housing, so you wanna strategically change or expand the boundary. But then it all of a sudden causes this real kind of uh. You know, kind of limitation on our water and our sewage uh plant capacities. And it seems to me that then all of a sudden. The community takes on. Uh, a a bigger burden of saying, okay, we have to have more revenues in order to sponsor. The the, you know, the the improvement in the water and the sewer treatment facilities.
That's absolutely correct. And that is uh one of the primary things that that our city along with most other cities in California rail at the legislature about every year.
Are they offering grant money or?
They're not offering much. There 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 is, there is grant money available, not grant money, but there is financing available to help develop the housing. And there are some grants available for um. Uh, infrastructure improvements such as wastewater plant upgrades and and you know, those sorts of things. But those grants are not available to anyone who asks for them and they tend to be very competitive. And uh not many are granted in terms of the need that's out there. So you you've hit on the frustration that all cities in California have right now, which is. The mandates are coming down from the legislature and we we don't have a choice but to abide by them. Uh, the penalties for not abiding by them are serious and they will look at Huntington Beach and see what their situation has been like.
Is there some way uh when you promote this to the general public? That there's a price tag you can put on? The expansion of the water and the and the sewage treatment plants. Uh, and whether water is going to be, I mean, the finite resource.
Sure.
We need to develop more wells. Do we need to actually increase our state men, our state allotment? You know, those sorts of things I think have to kind of being shown as a balance for expansion of boundaries.
Yeah, and and understand, we're not talking about the expansion of boundaries here. We're talking about the the ability to consider expanding those boundaries in the future. And there's a difference because what, nothing that I'm talking about here is going to result directly in annexation or expansion of boundaries. What we're talking about here is having the flexibility to do that in the future if it's determined necessary at some point. My my own. You know, professional opinion right now is Beelton is just about the right size that it is. Right now, but I know it won't be that way forever. I know that at some point we will need to have some ability to to grow outward as cities do, they either grow or they die. Um, and they don't have to grow uncontrolled and they don't have to grow uh hugely, but they need to have that ability to to make changes and have that flexibility. To support not only the residents, but the businesses that operate here. You you can't have a thriving business community if you don't have a fair number of of residences. So. All excellent points and and we will bring that. We we will continue to discuss that through the process. But I'm not, um, I'm not in the position of trying to sell this to anyone. I want to put it out there and lead the discussion and let the council go where they will with it. In the end, uh, you know, this will be up to the voters one way or another. And if it if it.
Well, yeah, I mean, it just in terms of, you know, you you usually on a ballot, you have pro and con analysis.
Yes.
And I would think that, you know, the fiscal impact. Needs to be really kind of, you know. Demonstrated to the people living here. Because, you know, even though you're planning for the future, you're not doing any particular expansion. Um, you know, you open up the opportunities, then all of a sudden people will need to know, hey, this is what it's gonna cost the community for. For doing these kinds of expansions. Just one last question. I noticed a lot of apartments being built along the freeway um off of Avenue of Flags. The the apartment complex um that's built. Or just between the hotels. So and and it seems to me that there's still space to fill in. Uh, along the freeway there. Uh, if if things open up and some commercial spaces become available. Could those spaces be bought out and more of those, you know, those apartment complexes uh could be established?
That that is absolutely a possibility. Um, from my perspective, that's something we desperately want to avoid. Um, because if we lose our ability to have a retail core of the city or or. Uh, the city won't be able to sustain itself. The the business community in this city drives uh so much of our revenues. That if we eat up our our existing commercial property with residential uses, which are a net negative on in terms of of revenue brought to the city. We won't have the resources to keep our infrastructure up. We won't have the ability to continue to provide this, the. Uh, the the amenities we provide here, let alone, you know, well, we won't have enough money to provide for the basic services, let alone the amenities we're providing at this point, so.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I apologize.
No, I think we're great because those were very, but if people don't understand, or hopefully people are watching on TV tonight, that. Hopefully they understand these are just concepts. This is not written in stone and that you're presenting what this is as a workshop. So I appreciate it.
I just don't, I, this is your meeting, I don't want to take it over.
You're doing a great job, so. Patty.
Patty Hamel, twenty year resident of Beelton. Um, if you could provide a little bit more clarification, you just brushed upon it there. With annexation and or versus the urban growth boundary. So if I can ask, you know, like, okay, so say this goes through all the workshops and we agree that half mile. So all those properties would be included in the urban growth boundary, but then they would have to apply, you know, for a project and get annexation to go forward.
That's that's correct. The line that's drawn here doesn't um. It doesn't mean that all of these properties will be annexed into the city. It doesn't even envision that all this would be annexed into the city. The purpose of including this large area here is to provide a large enough area with a with uh enough parcels that someone could cobble together one or two of them. To uh to say, I've got a viable project here. Um, and that would be considered for annexation into the city if it was needed to meet a state mandate. Otherwise. We would need to have um a property owner approach the city and say, I want to be annexed, here's my project. And then the city council, if it feels there's merit to that project, would put it on the ballot and let the voters decide whether that was appropriate or not.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
And actually, Patty, that was a interesting question because I think it brought up the possibility that there could be things interspersed. Within that framework of the urban growth boundary, I'm assuming it wouldn't necessarily be parcel A, B, C, D, it could be parcel. A, but not C and D and parcel E potentially, is that correct?
It is correct and we'd have to look into that. Um, I mean, you. I'm sure you've seen, um, if you've ever looked at the the map of the city of Los Angeles, you see the big.
Tried to avoid it.
The big corpus of the city of Los Angeles and then the then the the uh the harbor down here and that harbor is a part of the city of Los Angeles. And it's connected because it has to be all contiguous. It's connected to the city of Los Angeles by this long, thin line, which is the, I think, the Harbor Freeway. So what the city of LA did is that to make it contiguous. So it is conceivable that if. In looking at this one property owner out here in order to meet that state mandate says, I'm willing to do it and they were the last property out here. It's conceivable that the city could incorporate the roadway to make that contiguous, but it doesn't mean that all those properties in between would need to be annexed as well.
But but if that were to take place and that property was to be annexed, then the infrastructure to provide service. I.e. water and sewer would have to. Go down two forty six or be.
Would would have, would have to be extended somehow. It could be done through two forty six, it could be done through some sort of a private easement elsewhere. But yes, to provide municipal services, water and sewer there, we would have to be able to connect that to our existing system.
Thank you. So Scott, just.
Yes, sir.
Could that be part of the initiative when we do our uh UGB and or either our sphere of influence state that. If we want. A, B, and C. If you. Or A and E, B and C have to come along? Or is that pressing the point?
You you could, but but again, particularly to the west and again, my my concept here. I I'm not envisioning a lot of development to the west. And the reason for that is because I worry about the impact at the one oh one and and Avenue Flags and McMurray. So. This is our relief valve for the state mandate. If if we if we need to build something, we can point to that and if it has to be built, we can extend out and we can do it. And that could be the end of it once we meet that for at least the next ten years or eight years.
If we're saying that's the Alamo, do we have to put that in the UGB?
We don't.
This is because it's, you know, or unless we put where the sunset date is, this is.
We could, but we don't have to. I mean, this is, this is really the the the. This is a um. There's a lot of options available, let's put it that way. You can be as specific or as general as you want to be.
Right.
Um, and uh my goal here is to try and figure out what the general community sentiment is, so we hit it right when it goes to the ballot and we don't have to worry about it. If if we don't hit it right and it goes down in flames, then everyone's gonna be upset because, well, not everyone, but. People who want it are gonna be upset because it's not gonna be there anymore, so.
Exactly.
So, yeah, so, okay, great.
I I realize I should probably, before we get further, uh disclose some ex parte communication in that. I was part of the green team meeting where there were members of the public and we had discussion, so. Um, and that also, though I work for the county of Santa Barbara, I am screened off. All projects around the boundary of Beelton, so that is why um we didn't feel that there was a conflict of interest in me participating here, so. I wanted to get that.
Perfect.
On the, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, any other further comments? Does anyone have a comment on the north? Which is. Off of McMurray and. There it is, Dr. Buell's. Family Farm. Seeing them, we'll go to the east. That little.
Are we going in between for the north or?
We can, we like.
I had some questions. The north, um. Let's see. Oh, there was the provision to potentially require a specific plan for the parcel further to the south.
Oh, that's that's the east property here.
But I wanted to put forth that potentially a specific plan could make sense in this location too, especially since the properties are under. Common ownership and would be transitioning potentially to agriculture.
I I agree, regardless of whether or not the urban growth boundary was extended to include this, even even if it were, the the specific plan would be an excellent tool for this area, yes.
But we have to, once it's in there, to come, just like they did with the specific plan for tractors supplying those? Or do you have to, can you include that in?
W- w- we can include it in the initiative as I was, a- a- as I um. Show on the the property to the east. It can be included as a as a requirement within the initiative.
Right.
Doesn't have to be, but it's not, it's not a bad idea.
If you give. Well, you're telling a story, you're being very transparent. This is what could happen. And I think that's. Was part of the issue from the last one. Everybody kept saying a lot of different things, but no one's ever said, okay, this is what will happen or this will not happen if you don't do this. So I I just, you know, if that was part of the the initiative, then I it gives people a general idea of what could happen.
It does, and and it goes beyond just the environmental review and the site plan review because it requires things like a full blown discussion of. Not just the sequel, but the the infrastructure analysis. Do we have the capacity to handle this? Even though, yeah, it looks like we can extend a road that way. Is is there really capacity for that? So I I think it's a great tool and and yes, if that's if that's a recommendation the commission would want to make coming out of this meeting, I think that would be great.
I I it's, I think it's just very transparent and it gives people an idea and an option, okay, this is what could happen. I mean. We've been here since seventy two and 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 through the years when Dr. Buell was really doing a lot of business. Farm, a family farm, did a lot of work with there and I know the property well and uh. It just gives everybody an open idea of what could happen there. And and you know, uh, I just think we need to, especially even though we have a sunset date, to give them as many options and ideas of what could take place.
And I generally agree, agree that this is the most logical place for the city. To expand um and and a area that. I think a lot of people could be excited about. Um, but we want to make sure that. Especially because it's transitioning from an ag use that, you know, we're getting what we want from that property.
Would there have to be a a motion at this point? It doesn't seem like.
No, this is, this is, um, there's no motion is needed. This is a workshop. We're gonna just take notes and we'll compile all this as we go and we'll we'll make sure the council. Um, takes it all into consideration down there.
So this, this um. It is showing that that an evolution of. In the past, we've have the big landowners say what's gonna happen and this is the way it's gonna be and. And you guys can have these, a couple of homes here and there, but now we've evolved where the community has more say. Every day about. What we can talk about, what we can decide on. But thanks you for informing us. What our options are. And you, we mentioned water and sewage. We keep in mind too, that traffic, I mean, that was the 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 big. The big deal on the on the in and out burger and anything else that goes on uh up and down the two forty six and highway one oh one. So we're gonna continue to evolve. So. Uh, I just hope that more and more of the community keep their ears open and and uh. And become more aware of what we have. And think about where they want to, want us to be in the future. So.
That's all I have to say right now.
And this is an area where potentially we could have another. Access point to the one oh one.
Correct. Once you, once you move to the north of the city limit line a certain distance, it it no longer is a Caltrans freeway and it becomes a highway, which means access points don't need a full interchange. You can. You can create an access point where where you need one or where you. You can, you can create an access point where, where you need one or where you want one, consistent with Caltrans requirements, of course.
And how, how far up is that line that parallels 101 approximately? If you can.
How far up is this?
Yeah, would it be, say, across, if, like, I know where the Zachary Creek Restaurant is.
Don't, it, it might be up almost that far.
Almost that far.
I'm not sure. I don't have the aerial photo underneath it to be able to tell, but yeah.
Because I, I, well, it probably wouldn't apply if it was a highway because I think you have to have at least half a mile between exits on freeways.
My understanding is on a, on a freeway, Caltrans typically requires at least a mile.
At least a mile. Yeah.
Hours were built way before that requirement came into place, but it is now they, they want.
Okay.
It's at least a half mile, but I think
Yeah, I think preference. Yeah, I think that's right. So that would be potentially two miles?
Oh, from, from the, the
North, northmost point of that to where?
Oh, maybe
Rufus T. Buell is now?
I don't even think it's quite a mile.
The, the north of?
Yeah, the far north, the far north end there.
Oh, it's not even a mile. Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's even a mile. I think it, it might be closer to half mile, three quarters of a mile.
There's a scale on that. It's okay. You can't see it, but
Yeah, it doesn't go up far enough. There's a scale on that one right there. You can take it almost all the way up there. So anyway, yeah, it's, it's, it's not quite that far.
The East, does anyone have any comments on the East?
Okay, we have two parcels on the East, the small one then, and then the, uh, the larger 47 acre parcel.
Right. And I think we talked, go ahead. We, we thought that would be a specific plan option as well, just because of the neighborhood.
That would be my suggestion.
And that would be, I think, I'd like to see it come from the commission.
Specific plan requirement, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you again, I'm Len Fleckens, and I live on Valverde Road. And in terms of the tiny parcel, go for it. But regarding the Polo Ranch, is that the title?
Yes.
Landowner anywhere around this, currently on county property could approach the city as apparently this one handles. So I don't see why we're really singling this out. Anybody else on Santa Rosa Road or west of the city could be coming to the city at any time and saying, you know what, we want to develop, we want to put in a resort here. So I don't really understand why we want to single this one out, aside from the fact that he has come to the city manager. So I would think that we would not want to expand the boundary to include it unless the landowner and developer were offering something that city residents, current city residents, all of us really want to have them, okay? And apparently, I, I don't see where a high-end resort is what city residents are asking for. And I said this at the Green Team meeting, but he wants to add a movie theater, a bowling alley, and a swimming pool. You know, I, I think people would get behind it, but I don't understand the way it's, yeah. Running any development that we're talking about, including that when we talk about the southeast, I think thinking about the benefits to the city residents is what should really be, not just the cost benefit of a project in terms of impacts, but
Thank you. Anyone else going, going on? Oh, I'll close the public comment and then bring it back up to the dice that I got to make your final comments and
We still just
We do?
I'm sorry.
We still
The South, oh, right.
But, well, my question was, given that this has a polo field and we, I know obviously we could accommodate hotel use in our zoning, but with the polo field and like the historical ag use, I mean, I don't see like an ag zoning, I mean, would we have to create a new zone district? Or the specific plan, would it drop that?
That's the specific plan because we don't have an agricultural zone and we, Buellton, while it exists in an agricultural environment, has never been an agricultural city. And rather than trying to create something that, that we can shoehorn a project into, when you have one that's large enough like this and you go through the specific plan process, that tool is designed to be able to tailor specific requirements through the project to meet city needs.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the same logic sort of applies to the, the northern then because you might not get a conventional use that's already accommodated in the city there. Yeah, okay. Thank you. That's the only question I had on that one.
Does anybody have any comments on this South?
Let's see, South, oops, I think the South would be, I'm going to go back to, oops, wrong way, sorry. I'm all my slides are out of order here. There we go. And sure.
What was your name again? Comments, so I might as well.
Yes.
I have not sent them in yet, Len Fleckens. So I like the way the city manager is approaching this, but, and I do think that whatever development we, previous potential development we've heard about should more appropriately be in the North, whether it's a truck stop or some industrial development rather than southeast here. But I am a little concerned by the way I've heard it presented as we want to see if the county likes it. What I heard was, you didn't say this, but if the county likes it, we're going to like it too. And then we're going to want to add it. I think we need to be open to saying, even if the county likes it, wants to approve it, we might want to fight it to some extent.
I, and I think that's fair. I, I'm not suggesting that the city not be involved in any discussions that the county may have or the board of supervisors consider, or the planning commission might consider. What I'm suggesting is that if the county approves urbanized uses that would generate revenues, it's not appropriate for the county to take those revenues when the bulk of the impacts from those uses are going to fall on the city's infrastructure. And so, yes, we would absolutely step forward and say, that's not something we want to see. But in the event that were approved, I seem to recall quite a bit of discussion around cannabis where it was decided that that's not something we wanted to see. The county did it anyway. If that were to happen here, I just want to give the city the flexibility to say, okay, we're going to, we're going to ensure that our residents get the benefit of that development. If it's going to happen, then
Our residents getting the benefit means that the city getting more tax revenue in its coffers, which does benefit, I understand, but
More so, more so than that development taking place and us not getting the revenue in our coffers. Because the, the development's going to be there anyway and the impacts on our infrastructure is going to be there anyway. The only difference is we don't have any way to subsidize that now, so.
But I hear the same thing, sort of for the Polo Ranch. Gee, the county might approve it anyway and we don't want to miss that revenue. I understand that.
That's a little different. The county won't approve it anyway, from what we understand.
Okay.
Although, as the city manager here, I can tell you that the revenue that would come from a use like that is really appealing.
I understand.
But it's not my call, so.
I do think that the river, anything along the river though, is going to bring out a lot of people.
I, I know it will. And if, if you had, and no one here, well, only a few of you probably had seen my original concepts when, when I started discussing this a year ago, these maps looked much different and did include the area that's in blue right now and a little bit more because that's what had been discussed previously. Over the past year, these have morphed from what, and, and I'll show them to you later if you'd like, but it's more from what it was then to what it is now, which is much, much more condensed. And I, and I assume it will change some more as we move forward here. Thank you.
Great.
There we go.
Yeah, she's coming.
It's annoying. I was just wondering, at one point in time, was there not a discussion about Caltrans bringing an off-ramp through that property in the south and making kind of a bypass of Buellton into solving?
I, it wouldn't surprise me, but not that I, I've never seen anything to that effect. I, I think
Because I mean, you know, we're so concerned about, you know, the, 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 we do have.
Yes.
And if that, you know, is a possible benefit of getting, you know, some, you know, relief to our traffic situation.
Yep.
Then maybe we need to revisit that.
It, it is something that, you know, I haven't given a lot of thought to because the obstacle we're trying to deal with there crossing is the, is the river.
Right.
The overpass that's built or the bridge that's built over the river right now is, was probably very expensive back when it was built. And trying to get a flyaway bridge over to, to cross the river at a diagonal and, and reach the south end of, or excuse me, the east end of the city there would probably be astronomically expensive. It's certainly not something the city could afford to produce. And given Caltrans' constrained budget, I don't think that's in the books for them anymore either, even if it were on their books at some point. I, I don't know.
So I was just thinking
It would be a great solution. Yes, it would be a great solution. I just am not sure it's economically feasible, so.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And yes, that was brought up many, many, many years ago during solving, trying to do the bypass.
Okay.
And we were going to be included. So, well, I will close the public hearing and bring it back up to you guys to make final comments or words. Nothing. Laura?
As far as final comments go, I, I do want to commend you on this presentation. I think it's very fair. It's very clear to me, at least, that, you know, you're presenting options for how we can think about the future and knowing that there are risks involved in any number of decisions to be made. And I, I appreciate the work done and thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question. I mean, to me, in the South, it seems like the biggest impetus to development is probably access to public utilities. And so my concern, and perhaps it's not a valid concern, is that, you know, is there an increased chance of, of LAFCO, like putting it into the sphere of influence if we put it in the urban growth boundary?
I don't know. I'd have to talk to Mr. Prater to find out what his thoughts on that are. The concern, I shouldn't say the concern. I think one of the concepts going back quite a number of years was that, and maybe Rose can chime in on this if she is, is aware of it, but I think at some point there was a concept that involved putting another city water reservoir on the southeast side of the freeway up there on the hillside. If, if we could acquire a piece of property to allow for a better water pressure throughout the city and, and a more redundant system. I, I know that was something I talked about with one of our council members. I don't know if that was any, if that's ever been something you've contemplated or discussed.
No, and it wasn't previously when we had originally, prior to the original UGB.
Okay, okay. So, but, you know, a, a large development, much like the hotel development we're talking about, there's something large and urban would, I, I can't imagine building a hotel on a septic system, particularly not that close to the river, nor even a, a, an RV park that close to the river on a septic system. So either they're going to create their own wastewater plant on site to accomplish that or they're going to have to tie into us. And so I, I don't think we're in great danger of having the county approve anything there. I, I just, I didn't want to leave it unsaid that, hey, if you do it, I'm going to take it from you.
Yeah. I agree with you. It's more just that if that opens up the possibility of it getting put in the sphere of influence and
Well, it, the, the concept here does not include it within the urban growth boundary. It, it leaves the urban growth boundary where it's at. Unless that development take place, then the trigger, that's the trigger to automatically extend it. So I think that could LAFCO take a look at that and say, well, they're, they're already planning for potential annexation if this gets approved. So yeah, might as well go in the sphere of influence. It's possible. But I think that if we were to sit down with county planning and, and iron out an agreement between the county and the city as to where the appropriate sphere of influence lines could be. Again, I, I don't get to speak for the council. They would have to weigh in on this. But my recommendation to the council is we don't need to go to the south of the river. That's not, you know, I don't need a hotel on the south side of the river. We don't need, I mean, would I, would I love the revenue that would come from a hotel and other flying flags? Yes, I would, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary. And so I, I think we could negotiate something with the county that would, that would make LAFCO less likely to include that within the sphere of influence involuntarily.
I had an idea. The, we were talking about the south side and, and then, in the future, a need for more water. Can the city provide a reservoir? Or is that something that has to be done at the county or state level?
Outside the city limits?
Well, if we annex the south side and put a reservoir there, is it something that we could do? Or is it something that requires county and
We could do it and it would not even require us to annex it. We have all of our reservoirs, I believe, are outside the city. No. Yes, all of our reservoirs are outside the city limits.
One is.
Oh, just, just the one in the furthest north. Just on the top of that map that you can see right up at the top, right in the middle, there's a little white square. The very top of the frame there, that is the city's reservoir. I forget what number that is. Three, reservoir number three. That's outside the city. The city owns the property?
Yes.
Okay, but it's not, it's not a part of the city. We could do something similar on the, the ridge across the highway without annexing to the city. That's, that's possibility. The, the reason that came up more recently in that discussion when, when the landowners approached us with it is they were trying to, I think, sweeten the pot and say, hey, if you let us do this, we'll give you a piece of property up at the top of the mountain to work with. Obviously, you know, anything we can do to bolster the city's utility system and make sure that it's, it's got redundancies in place so that we don't have a failure down the road is a good thing. But I don't think that's absolutely essential to annex that area in order to achieve that goal.
Are we doing final comments now? Okay. Did you have more, Lauren?
I did think of one other thing. I was just going to ask about our, our ability to have impacts. We have representation on LAFCO, correct? The city manager, the mayor?
Well, not necessarily. I, I don't, I don't believe our mayor is, is a, our former mayor, Sierra, was a member of LAFCO, but she was an alternate member of LAFCO. And I don't know if that still stands with Mayor King. Or there's only, each city doesn't get representation. I believe there are two cities, two special districts, and the county are represented on the, on, and then maybe one member at large, something like that. So I, I don't know for sure, but I don't believe we have representation on LAFCO right now.
Do we know?
These seats are coming up. Don't know how that works.
Okay, I'm, I could ask. I'll ask.
I have a couple. I'll just go by region. On the west side, I generally agree with the comments that Len made. I don't think it's ideal to potentially have, you know, large agricultural production separating parcels that are coming into the city. So unless we could get all of it, I don't, or at least a chunk to the south or a chunk to the north, I don't know that it makes sense to include it. I get where, where Scott's coming from with needing more space potentially for arena numbers, but I, it's still, I, I would be more in favor of at least reducing the, the area that it extends out to. I, I think it's unlikely that some of that land's going to come out of agriculture or that some of those property owners would want to. On the north end, as I said before, I think it, it's an ideal location to extend the boundary. And that I would like to see it have a specific plan requirement, but that it could be good for the city. The east. Oh, we talked about the specific plan. I didn't have any comments on that one beyond what we talked about with the specific plan accomplishing whatever uses they've wanted to propose there and then us being able to evaluate that on the basis of the project. In the south. In the south. To, uh, in relation to the question I asked, I would just want us to discuss that further with LAFCO to see if it. It increased the potential that they would force us to incorporate it into the sphere of influence. And then, you know, the the LAFCO findings for an annexation, if any of them would be. Um. Easier to make by us doing that action or taking that action, then I would. Uh, at least want to know that before we went into that decision-making process, so. I think that that's. All the comments I had.
Good. Um. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for putting this on, especially Scott. You did an excellent job. I think he gave us a lot of options. And uh, information for hopefully the people who are watching it on TV tonight and the people who are here to participate. Uh, I think this is what makes um, Buellton really uh, a great little city. Uh, the four of us went to um, the League of City Planning Commission. One of the topics was everybody saying, well, no one gets involved, but I think that's what's really important here. People do get involved. And they get involved because we give them the information. And uh, I think staff did an outstanding job. Thank you. So uh. I think my comments were pretty much the same, where, as I said, you know. Most of my questions are answered. It just uh, hopefully it does not be as contentious as it was last year. I think the us getting ahead of the curve uh, and just having one ballot initiative, uh, I think it'll be a. A better idea for the city. So hopefully that's coming from the commission. The council will understand that.
Thank you.
So.
If I can make one more comment before we close, sorry. Um, on the screen right now is our link to our Buellton Engage page regarding the urban growth boundary. There's a very, very long link, or you can go to the short one down below it, which is tinyurl.com slash Buellton U G B. And it will take you to all things urban growth boundary, everything we've discussed here tonight, you will find online. Along with um, letters, you know, written communications and comments. We're gonna post those online also. Uh, the little uh, um, Q R code there works to take you there too. So um, that's all I had. Please visit the page, sign up for notifications so you can hear the next steps in the process. Right? Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll close it at seven thirty two.